You're good to go.
Thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually and ensure the continued safety of the public staff members at the Boston Zoning Commission. As the open meeting law requires, I notify the public, this meeting is being recorded. Please be advised that an audio and video recording of the meeting is being made. At this time, I'd like to have the interpreters introduce themselves.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is John, I'll be the Cantonese interpreter for this morning's meeting. 不客气，谢谢。
Thank you.
All right, we're good to go, Jay.
That's it, okay. At this point, I'll take a roll call as zoning commissions. Joe Hatton.
Present.
Michael Nichols.
Present.
Michael, Michael Demella, I'm not sure is with us today. If you want, speak up, Michael. Nelson Arroyo. Nelson. David Ma. David, you with us? Drew Lef.
Present.
Ayesha Miller.
Present.
Andori Morikawa.
Present.
Ricardo Ostrich. Ricardo, you with, you here? And Jay Hurley, I'm here, so. Right now, I don't have Michael Demella, David Ma, and Ricardo.
I think David is, Dave is here, I think we just got to get him to unmute himself, so I, and I think Mike Nichols just joined as well, it looks.
No, I got Mike, I got Mike.
Okay, I got Michael, might have been here to rejoin. Because Dave was the one asking whether I could channel Jeff Hampton today.
I'm here, I'm back, sorry.
Okay. Well, Ricardo, Ricardo.
Yes, here, I'm sorry, late, I had some tech issues.
No problem. 9:00 AM Public Hearing, this is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of MAP Amendment Number 776 and a petition for approval for the Plan Development Area Number 151, 1400 Boylston Street, MAP 1Q, Fenway Neighborhood District. Hearing was duly advertised on February 28, 2024, in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, the proponent will first present their case in a subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in our position at the same time. If you're willing to testify, please take, if you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel, this will signal staff you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine or raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone, your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you when you have 30 seconds remain, at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to 10 minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Commissioner Hurley, we have Counselor Durkin on the line, and she's got her hands up. I'm guessing that she may wish to speak on an item, but also need to speak out of order in order to get to another meeting.
Absolutely.
Counselor Durkin.
Thank you so much, I'm going to keep my video off because I'm in transit. I am here in support of 1400 Boylston today. The city proponent and the community have worked together to produce a project that serves the needs of the neighborhood. And Samuel's and Associates stands out as a developer who truly understands the needs of the Fenway. Their work in the neighborhood over the past 25 years has been transformative. Samuel's commitment to creating inclusive and sustainable spaces is clear, and that same dedication is present in the proposal before us today. This proposal at 1400 Boylston seeks to greatly improve the public space from its condition, which is currently an uninviting environment full of curb cuts and an extensive amount of asphalt throughout, through a complete rebuilding of adjacent parts of Park Drive, Boylston, and Kilmarneck. In a fast-growing neighborhood, it is all more important to provide green spaces that serve as a much-needed respite within the versi-urban fabric. This new public green space will be complemented by another much-needed component of a healthy neighborhood, a branch of the Boston Public Library. With their $12 million commitment to build out the civic space intended as a library, the Fenway Neighborhood will, at long last, receive a public institution that cultivates lifelong learning, arts, culture, and community. The neighborhood cannot continue to grow in a commercial and untainted uses without complementary growth in its essential public amenities. This is an incredible first step to creating a neighborhood that welcomes people of all ages to call this neighborhood home for more than just a couple of years. I remain heartened that the library in the Fenway reinforces many of the principles outlined in BPL's strategic plan. This project will provide safe travel to and through a site via narrowing the crossing at Park Drive and Boylston Streets, expanded sidewalks, reduced curb cuts, and a commitment via the developer landmark center to provide shuttle access for three years between Star Market, as currently cited, and the new Star Market location. Finally, this project includes a lot of meaningful benefits, including the developer's housing contribution to a separate development at 165 Park Drive, including 48 affordable homeownership units, which I supported, and which provides a significant benefit to the neighborhood and city sorely in need of affordable housing. For the reasons stated, I urge the ZBA to approve this project today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Quinn Valsich, I'm a Senior Project Manager at the BPDA and the Development Review Team. The proposal before you is for a MAP Amendment and PDA Development Plan for Plan Development Area Number 151, which accompanied an Article 80 large project known as the 1400 Boylston Street Project in the Fenway Neighborhood of Boston. This was approved by the BPDA Board on February 15, 2024. Proposed projects for a mixed-use building containing approximately 548,000 square feet of gross floor area. It includes ground floor retail space and core shell lab-ready space in the remainder of the building. The proponents are facilitating the construction of a 5,000-square-foot civic building on the project site as well, which may be used as a Boston Public Library facility. I now turn it over to my colleague Loise from the BPDA Zoning Compliance Team to discuss the planning context, consider the review of this project before the development team begins their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Quinn.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Chair. My name is Loise, and I'm the zoning compliance reviewer assigned to this project. The proposed project is located within the Fenway Triangle Neighborhood Development Area, zoning district. Oops, Joanne, we can see your Gmail, just let you know. Or I can, I'm having some video issues myself. I'll continue as we drop that planning context slide. In 2022, BPDA staff initiated a public process and rezoning study to ensure the zoning in Fenway enabled development appropriate for the current context and consistent with the community's current preferences. Thanks. This process resulted in new zoning for this location, making the site eligible for Plan Development Area zoning overlays, as you were all involved in. The most recent neighborhood-specific plan for this area was adopted in 2002. There you can see Land Use and Urban Design Guidelines. Although the plan provides some relevant recommendations, the context has greatly evolved since this time when planners contemplated a future without the Red Sox and Fenway Park in the current location. Staff review was also informed by the neighborhood context, including the adjacent Emerald Necklace. This park adjacency also triggered review by the Parks Department per ordinance 7.4-11. Next slide, please. Okay, so Plan Development Areas are allowed in this zoning district, provided that the associated proposal delivers certain public benefits, including new jobs and creation of open space, as this does. The proposed PDA zoning overlay being considered tonight would make the proposed uses, including research laboratory, allowed. The underlying zoning places limits on maximum building dimension for PDA overlays. The proposal being considered is consistent with these limits. The proposed project went through extensive design review in order to ensure it improves the area's public realm and multimodal mobility options, which the counselor referred to earlier. With that, thank you very much for your time this morning. I'll hand it over to the development team to present the proposal.
Thank you, Ella.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Peter Sugarides with Samuel's and Associates. Some of you may be aware that over the last 25 years, the Samuel's Organization has worked in the Fenway Neighborhood with the community, with the city and various agencies on the planning and redevelopment of the Boylston Street Corridor. And we've worked closely with the community to bring forth the vision that really started more than 25 years ago about of creating a mixed-use district. And many of us may recall that Boylston Street was really dominated by parking lots, fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, and gas stations. I'm proud this morning to be able to present a project that we have worked on very closely with the community and the city over the last three years. And over those three years, the project has been shaped and modified in many ways to bring forth the project this morning. I'm also proud that this project will allow us to bring some extraordinary and unique public benefits and community benefits, some that were mentioned by the counselor, and I'll get into more details of those specific community benefits. So without further ado, I'll get into the presentation here. So the project site is, as outlined here, at the corner of Park Drive and Boylston Street. So approximately 2.4 acres consists of the existing Star Market, which is a single-story building, two larger parking lots, and a former gas station. Next slide, please. A few photos here, just to orient you. Again, the abandoned gas station, large paved parking lots in the single-story supermarket building with the loading that's at the corner of Boylston and Kilmarneck. Next slide, please. So here is a representation of the, our thinking of how to create additional open space, not just for along this property, but along the Emerald Necklace. And this, this project dovetails, the open space here, creating on this project dovetails with what started 10 years ago with the remaking of the former Sears Building, now known as 401 Park, where we took what were formerly parking lots and paved areas and created open spaces. And this site continues that design thesis of creating open space along the very important Emerald Necklace and Park Drive. And so when this project is completed, the two projects, the old Sears Building, former Sears Building, and this project will have created over three acres, or close to three acres, of publicly accessible open space, spanning from the Fenway T stop over to Peterborough Street. Next slide, please. Zooming out, this overall site plan gives a representation showing how that green space fits in along the Emerald Necklace and the adjacency of the, the open space and the, the open spaces that have been created in the Emerald Necklace open space and how we've oriented the building further to the east in order to set it back as far as possible from the open spaces that would be created. Next slide, please. So a little bit of details of the building. Ground floor here, again, if we start along Park Drive, you'll notice the civic building, which is an approximate 5,000-square-foot building that has been described as potentially a, being programmed as a branch for the Boston Public Library, along with the open space at the corner of Park Drive and Boylston Street. As we move further east on the site, you'll notice the building, the dark orange represents the retail as with all of the other buildings along Boylston Street, very important to create an activated ground floor. So we are providing the retail space, the lobby, and then the loading areas to the south of the, of the retail space, fully enclosed. It was very important that we designed the building and the loading area to be segregated from the adjacent residential uses, so the loading areas are fully enclosed. There is access to the parking designated with the blue dashed arrows off Kilmarneck Street there. Excuse me, the sidewalks along Park Drive and Boylston Street will be completely rebuilt, and that's over 1,000 linear feet of reconstruction that will be completed according to the Boston Complete Streets Design Standards. Next slide, please. I'm focusing a little bit more on pedestrian circulation and bike lanes. You'll notice the orange arrows that show all of the new pedestrian paths that will be provided through the open space and along the public, public ways. Additionally, the new protected bike lanes will be constructed along Park Drive and Boylston Street. And as we notice over at the crossings across Boylston Street and Brookline Ave, and was mentioned by the counselor, we will be rebuilding all of those crossings to make sure that they are safe and secure for cyclists and for pedestrians. Next slide, please. Getting into the design of the building, so we're looking at rendering from at the corner of Park Drive and Boylston Street, standing back towards the, towards the Rotary. And so one of the important features of the building here was really to, to step it as far back from the Emerald Necklace as possible. And even further from there, you'll notice these step backs of the building. And these are very deep step, step backs, they're 25 foot deep at each step back every other floor. And they're also designed to have substantial plantings. And so the way we envision this is really having the greenery climb up the, up along the western edge of this building. Next slide, please. Now, if we, we're over on the, the eastern side of the building at the corner of Kilmarneck Street and Boylston Street, and you'll notice the building steps down again. It's an 11-story building at its tallest, stepping down three levels here at the corner. And again, activated retail corner, at the corner and along the entire frontage of the building. Next slide, please. In the final view here, this is at the corner of Peterborough and Park Drive. In the foreground, you'll notice the civic building, which is meant to be very transparent and very glossy in order to be inviting. And in the background, you can see again the, the building and how that steps back away from the, the open space, the Pierce Building in, in the background there. Next slide, please. And a couple of renderings here of the open space. It's a combination of lawn areas that are meant to be flexible spaces along with lots of varied seating along the perimeters. Next slide, please. And this particular view is in front of the civic building in its seating that's designed to be within a grove of trees, again, to give somewhat of an outside reading room is the way we envision this. Next slide. So wrapping up the presentation here, an overview of the benefits. So we have worked with the community and the BPDA and adjacent Project 165 Park Drive, project that's proposed to be, or approved to be 117 residential units and includes 48 affordable homeownership units. We are providing an $18 million contribution that helps make that project possible and to help bring those affordable units to fruition. Additionally, we've been working with the CDC, who's recently purchased the building and will be creating additional affordable housing there, so we will be providing a $1.3 million contribution to help that project move forward. All of that is in addition to the typical linkage that commercial projects would provide. And the project here would provide approximately $6.8 million in linkage for housing and jobs training. We talked about the publicly accessible open space and all of the public realm improvements that we, the project will bring forth. Additionally, the civic building, we're committing $12 million for the construction of the approximately 5,000-square-foot building, which will be programmed in in response to the community needs, which we anticipate will be a Boston Public Library branch. And again, we talked about transportation improvements. We're committing $2.7 million for various off-site transportation and pedestrian improvements. So that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to respond to questions.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions or comments from the Commission?
I had a question for Peter.
I had you.
And it, the civic building, it sounds wonderful, and thank you for that rendering of it as well. I was curious, though, when I was reading through the materials, there was a lot of talk in addition of perhaps trying to cool this area with misting stations and cooling aspects. But when I was looking at the, the numbers on this, a $12 million cost for a 5,000-square-foot civic building at $2,400 a foot seemed high. So does some of that $12 million support programming or capital maintenance? It just seemed 2,400 a foot for a one-story building seemed kind of high. So I was curious what you were envisioning that that would end up being, in essence.
Good morning, Joe, nice to see you. Great question, so the 12 million was arrived at with, with a couple of thoughts in mind. One, the design of that building will, is not set yet. We envision it to be a very transparent and glossy building, which is usually a premium cost. We will be working with the city and the neighborhood on the final design. But we anticipate that some of that may also be used for interior fit-out. So not necessarily ongoing programming, but it's really meant to be used for the building. So, and, and again, the final design will be the subject of review with the community and the city. So it's really a group decision as to how that money gets used, how far that gets to into the building, design and construction.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
I think we're ready for public testimony.
Yep, we'll get to it.
Got the hands up already.
No problem, let's go to, say, no more questions or comments, let's go to public testimony, Kathleen.
Yep. And while I suppose to please announce your name, affiliation, and your position for the proposed project, and the first hand-up I see is Richard Giordano.
Oh, good morning, thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Richard Giordano. I'm representing Fenway Community Development Corporation. And I have to say, we're speaking wholeheartedly in favor of this project. It's quite amazing, and I'll be honest, you know, when we first started talking to the Samuel's Group, we kept criticizing and arguing, we want to see housing, why are you building this? And they convinced us, A, the cost to put in a whole housing project there just couldn't possibly work. And B, ultimately, they delivered absolutely unprecedented community benefits. I don't know how many other projects in the city are doing what they're doing. The only reason we're getting a whole other housing project built over at 165 Park Drive is because this project is committing the $18 million to that project, which will create 48 affordable condos, which we just do not have in the Fenway. There's nothing affordable here, so that's number one. Number two, they're helping us, we're able to buy a six-unit rental building stuffed with college students, and we're going to turn that into affordable condos. And then the fact that they're getting the City of Boston, a facility for a Boston Public Library that the community has been asking for for some decades now, but we don't have.
30 seconds.
Sorry for the enthusiasm.
No, no problem.
What the Commissioners to understand.
30 more seconds, you got 30 more seconds.
This is a remarkable project, and we just could not get the other things done without them. So we're happy that the zoning has been changed. We want to see this project built, and we want to see that open space that they're creating. So thank you, and we hope you accept the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Timothy Horn.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Timothy Horn. I'm the president of Fenway Civic Association, a 37-year resident of Fenway. I sat on the original iPod of the rezoning process in 1998. We've seen multiple iterations of this building, it's come a long way since it was first put to us. I'd like to say that our most important is that we finally get affordable housing and affordable homeownership chances. The 48 units that are going to be built at 165 Park Drive is something we've been looking for for a quarter of a century. We're happy to see the 117 units of other affordable housing and the six units of homeownership by CDC, that's awesome. This building really is important because, A, it respects the neighbors in the, in the area. It respects the Emerald Necklace with, due to shadows and to its size, and it actually enhances it with its green space, respects Ramler Park, and keeps it open and clean from shadows by stepping back. And this project has limited its height and its density in order to accomplish these goals that make it really, not just acceptable, but desirable for the neighborhood. The library, a permanent city resource, is something that we've just been asking for for a long, long time. And Samuel's Associates has been able to listen to us and get something done. And finally, the most important thing is the open space. The gas station that was used for Red Sox game day parking, you know, is one of the most noxious uses on the whole street. And the reason we rezoned in 1998, thank you, is because we wanted to get rid of the noxious uses. We had a good year, we had six gas stations. Okay, that was the primary reason for us in the parking lots, and we got rid of them. And today, we see that gas station, which was the worst offender, is now a green space that makes great connections back to the neighborhood and to now our new grocery store, and also enhances what was once known as the Rotary, and makes that a much safer place. We wholeheartedly support this project, thank you very much.
Thank you, Timothy.
If anyone else would like to testify, please raise your hand now. We've got no other hands up.
Thank you, Kathleen. At this point, we'll close out this portion of the meeting, we'll enter our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
Sure, I would, I would jump in. I've lived in the neighborhood for the last 14 years in the Fenway, and, and this is an incredibly well-considered project. It's wonderful to hear the support from Richard, Tim, and the letter we got in advance of this meeting by Freddie Veickley, as, as clearly this project has had to work hard with a developer that knows the neighborhood well and has built a reservoir of trust over many projects and many years to deliver a project that has wide, you know, public benefits, along with filling in really kind of a missing tooth in, in the street layout in this area and grid, and, and, you know, a richly better developed site by virtue of having this mix of ingredients there to support the neighborhood in the way it's used today and to continue to evolve the neighborhood. this mix of ingredients there to support the neighborhood in the way it's used today and to continue to evolve the neighborhood um as it's done for for the past ten or fifteen years. Um, and I will defer to Drew, who's got a comment as well. But I'm very much in support of this project.
Thank you, Michael. Drew?
Thanks, Michael. Thanks. Jay, um, I am, I I was interested, interested to see Tim, your, sorry, your Timothy's uh comments about the uh the work that was done in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, I was part of that. I did uh did um before, long before joining Standic, I did some consulting work on looking at the economic feasibility and the kind of density that would be needed to make, transform those parking lots and um McDonald's and all the others of stuff that was there. Um, so I'm really hap- happy to see the work that Samuels and the community have done together over and Peter uh over all of these years, these twenty-some years. Um, uh, it's tremendous to see this transformation, transformation, and I think this will be an excellent project. Peter, it was just um one question, the the affordable housing, the contribution that you're making there. This is not just for this project because it isn't a housing project, but this is for all for lots of the work that Samuels has done in the past in in this area. Is that right?
Um, no, it it is um directly tied to this project. Um, and and so this project is is contributing a payment of eighteen million dollars. Um, so that's um, you know, we um uh o- over the years, over the twenty-five years, um, all of the projects we've built have contributed in many ways, whether onsite or many of you may remember the Fenway Community Set Health Center that we built, um offsite contributions in addition to the onsite affordable. So there have been uh lots of different um ways that we've contributed over the years. And and um that is correct. Um, we, many of us sat through five years of rezoning meetings. Um, and I think this is a great example.
Yesterday, what Chris.
The city, the community. Yeah, I think I think Dave Marr is is eager to second uh the motion I'm about to make, which is a a motion in support of MAP Amendment Application Number Seven Seventy-Six, Development Plan for Plan Development Area Number One Fifty-One, Fourteen Hundred Boylston Street, MAP One Q, Fenway Neighborhood District.
Second. You're right. The motion is seconded. Any uh discussion on the motion?
I would just like, I would like to echo Michael and Drew's and others' comments. I think Samuels and Peter in particular have done what what I think is exemplary work on this entire street. It's just such a transformation that uh I think is a great example to hold up on how this whole process can work in a positive way for everyone. So thank you to Samuels.
Yeah, actually, I would echo that as well in terms of Samuels approaching. This is a very exciting project. So uh thank you so much and really appreciate the added green space.
All right, a little roll call. Joe Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Marr?
Yes.
Drew Leff?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Midori Morikawa?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nothing. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your support. Have a good day.
All right, same to you. Kathleen, I believe we have some internal
Yes, yeah, we are going to give um responding to some of the the questions we've had from some of you about how um you can be involved in some of the more significant zoning reform initiatives that um the agency and the city are embarking on um earlier in the process. Uh, we needed to balance that with some of the very important state laws around open meeting law. Um, and so are sort of bringing to you, um, it, there's, this is not a business item. There's no action you're being asked to take um and know that some of you may need to um leave a sort of presentation on uh the zoning for accessory dwelling units initiative that I kicked off last week with a public presentation. Uh, and our goal of this is just to make sure that because this will be a major a focus of zoning reform work over the coming year, that we're keeping you updated on that process and providing opportunities for you to provide uh feedback, ask questions. Um, you know, in your role as zoning commissioners in an appropriate, you know, public forum. Um, and so we will be recording this, including it as part of the our zoning commission meeting here today. Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to the ADU team uh who will sort of introduce themselves and and kind of walk through some of the information, and then we'll have time for any comments and questions from the commission.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Hi, everyone. Hi, hi, commissioners. My name is Adriana Lasso-Herrier. I'm a planner at the BPDA and I'm joined here today by uh my colleagues Will Cohen and Andrew Namias. We're going to, like, as Kathleen said, walk you through um an update on the citywide ADU zoning that just kicked off last week um with a public, our first public meeting, um virtual public meeting for the community. Um, and just, we're just going to walk you through um the goals of this um zoning update initiative um as well as some of the important milestones that we're looking forward to. So as you may have seen, if you watched this year's State of the City address, Mayor Wu announced the goal to eliminate barriers for Bostonians to build ADU citywide as well as more support for Boston's local contractor community who can work with homeowners to make this type of small-scale development happen. And so to that end, eliminating barriers to building ADUs will take some important cross-department collaboration. And over the course of the next year, the BPDA, the Mayor's Office of Housing, and the Boston Home Center are going to work together to ensure that Bostonians have the tools and the support that they need to build an ADU on their property if they so choose to. So on the BPDA side, planners will work to remove zoning obstacles that impede ADU development by updating residential zoning to allow for the byright development of ADUs on owner-occupied residential lots. And this ADU zoning initiative, which is the focus of this presentation, will work to accomplish two essential goals. Goal one being to update the zoning code, to align code requirements with existing building patterns um and create a zoning envelope for ADUs that allows them to be built without special zoning relief. And goal two, being the publication of an ADU guidebook, which will be a visual guide that helps homeowners understand how to develop an ADU on their lot. And concurrently, alongside this zoning update effort, MOH and the Boston Home Center will work to make it more accessible for Bostonians to build ADUs by expanding their resources for financing and technical assistance. This presentation will focus on the necessary zoning updates for allowing the byright development of ADUs, and in later slides we'll explain the goals and the timeline more in depth. But before we get to that, let's just take some time to define what ADUs are and how they can be used by Bostonians. ADUs are additional additional units that can be built within a an existing home or outside of it, such as such as in a smaller detached dwelling. And as you can see from the slide, they come in many shapes and sizes, including backyard cottages, attachments to the main home, or even as converted sheds or garages. And ADUs allow homeowners to utilize their property to its fullest potential and do what's right for their family's needs. And that ADUs can provide extra room for growing families, keeping multiple generations close by. They can provide opportunities for extra income with an onsite rental unit, and they can even increase equity on a homeowner's property. Although ADUs are smaller in size than the primary home on a lot, they are still dwelling units that must abide by Building and Life Safety Code requirements. ADUs must include a full kitchen and a bathroom. Um, building code compliant egress routes, access to electric and water shut-off valves, and fire sprinklers for any units that increase the total number of units in the building to three or more. Boston does currently have an ADU program which allows the creation of internal ADUs only. And this program lets homeowners convert pre-existing space in their homes into ADUs by using only pre-existing building footprint. So a lot of the time, we see that homeowners will opt to build their ADU using a pre-existing unused basement or attic. This program was launched in twenty eighteen, and in the six years since, there have been just about a hundred and fifty internal ADUs permitted across Boston, which comes out to be about twenty-five ADUs permitted every year. Almost every neighborhood in the city has seen ADU development, with Dorchester, East Boston, Mattapan, Roxbury, and Hyde Park having the most amount of uptake. However, Boston's current ADU program is limited, and currently, our city's zoning dictates that ADUs must be built with zero bump-out extension or construction to the existing envelope of the structure, which results in the addition of gross floor area. And in plain language, this means that homeowners can only build an ADU using pre-existing space in their homes. ADUs that are built through new construction would most likely require special zoning approval. External ADUs, like the attached or the detached ones that are shown on this slide, are effectively illegal to build on most residential lots without receiving a zoning variance and approval from the zoning board of appeal. Even ADUs that are built using mostly pre-existing internal space, but that need to add on extra floor area for livability reasons, would most likely require a zoning variance and special approval. So I'm now going to hand it over to Will to discuss more in depth the reasons why the majority of ADU types cannot be built without a zoning variance under Boston's current code, and the reasons why updating our zoning code is one of the most important steps to eliminating barriers for ADU development.
Thank you. Go ahead, Will.
All right, thank you so much, uh commissioner. Uh, I think you all, as an audience, are probably more familiar than most with the fact that the residential zoning in the city of Boston is outdated, and we could probably add the word complicated to the headline here. And we've been doing a lot of work to look at where these non-conformities or or inconsistencies are and where they lie. And um really, when it comes down to it, the the cleanest reason, as best as we can tell, is the simple fact that a boss, a a zoning code written in nineteen sixty-four to nineteen sixty-seven, depending on exactly how you want to parse it, um, never had to reflect the um existing built fabric of the city that largely predates that time. And so it serves the city in the way that it serves the city, but um the common assumption that we see a lot of the time from members of the public or just general understanding of what zoning does, is that zoning um shapes and determines the built form around around the city we live in, and it just is not the case in the city of Boston. What that means is the thing which so often comes up, this idea of the non-conformity, is not just an occasional occurrence in the city of Boston relative to the zoning code, but something which occurs quite frequently. Excite, please. And so there's lots of ways to skin the cat. That's a terrible metaphor. I don't know why we're skinning cats, but you know what I'm trying to say here. And um, you know, we're, there's many different aspects to the way that the zoning code regulates different aspects of the zoning uh of how things look, but let's just look at three of them. And if we look at sort of the easiest ones to calculate um geospatially, in GIS, there's a lot size. Um, not the shape, just literally square footage of the lot. Uh, the FAR um calculated as the gross floor area relative to the lot size compared with what zoning require allow uh allows as a maximum as a pure number. Or unit count restrictions, three mostly numeric things that are a little bit spatial that we can sort of apply from the zoning sub-districts into each individual parcel. If you look at those three rules only. And then, if we only look at the kinds of places where this ADU policy may make sense, and just to be very clear, it's basically the the residential fabric of the neighborhoods. Um, so you can see there's a lot of stuff that on this map is gray. We didn't look at um neighborhoods in the landmarks districts because, you know, there's a whole other super set of regulations that would likely restrict ADUs there. We're not really looking at commercial areas, and we're not looking at places in the base code. Um, at least for the purposes of pure ADU expansion, ADUs are not really a land use we see likely happening in, say, the downtown, for example. If we only look at these neighborhood areas and in the residential areas, something like eighty percent of residential parcels already failed to conform to at least one of these three things. Lot size, FAR, or unit count. And so if you look at that map, it's it's kind of like basically all the residential fabric of Boston, already, just those three things. And to make matters worse and or better, there's all the other things that we always hear about at the ZBA about this. Nothing dimensional appears here. No front yard stuff, no side yard stuff, no modal setback rules, no rear whatever, no frontage requirement, none of that is even being taken into account. No parking requirements, which as we know are oftentimes totally misaligned with the existing built fabric. Uh, we have a hunch that we don't have the proof of it right now on a map because that stuff is, as we all know, so complicated. It's almost impossible to try to map systematically across the city. There's a very good chance that if we, if we somehow found a way to calculate all of that citywide, that eighty percent would be a lot more like a hundred percent. Um, we know it's definitely more. Um, as one thing which gives us sort of a finger in the wind there, we know that yard violations are the most common thing at the ZBA. So if eighty percent is the less common ones, that says something about where the real percentage actually falls. And so as we go forward into this, these kind of restrictions are going to be a key because if the non-conformities exist, then because you have a pre-existing non-conformity, you can't do anything else yet. You already need a variance, much less whatever it is we need to, you know, legalize in a byright way if we're trying to allow ADUs by right. So that's, that's really a big task. It's not just about the ADUs. It's about what's currently there, just imply what's happening. And so as, you know, we noted before, um, it it, the 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 simplest reason for why this happened is that the zoning code never was required to line up with what's already there. It was sort of more of a at the times, it was being passed a way of thinking about what maybe other things could be. But here we are now, where with a mostly built-out city, uh, if seventy-seven percent of what's in the city is pre-World War Two, much less nineteen sixty-four, uh, that mismatch is very, very simple, you know, as very simple examples here. That triple-decker, you know, I think it would be a generally um qualitative statement to say, but if you look at that and say, yeah, that is a Bostonian-looking triple-decker, it basically violates all zoning. Um, which is sort of the classic issue right there. Um, and even smaller ones that are more recently built have little individual pieces that aren't exactly um following what's in a particular neighborhood subarticle or sub-district. Why does this matter? I think you all have a hunch, but let's just put it out clearly. Let's go to the next slide. Uh, the reason is that the non-conformities make it so there's now this pre-existing set of stuff which has to be overcome just for a baseline condition. Dormers, not just for ADUs, but general, you know, further expansion of the maintenance of pre-existing houses is already a extremely common thing we see at the ZBA all the time. Just and and, you know, that kind of thing we often say here when we're making BP recommendations to the ZBA that as, you know, aligned with both housing and changing city and many other kinds of neighborhood plans, the idea of maintaining a diverse housing stock, maintaining the ongoing viability of existing units at various scales is a key part of the housing goal, not to mention whatever it is that we're talking about for ADUs. And so that right there, any one of those changes, um, often, you know, for things like dormers would do something like increase the FAR more. Even if the existing structure isn't otherwise changing, now the relative built space to uh the lot is changing, whether it's that, small bump-outs, all the stuff, dormers, balconies, more rooms, the roof, living space, those are all individual components which we think of as the kinds of simple pieces which likely would go into building an ADU. And so it it fixing it is sort of uh that all has to go together. And to be very clear why this is helpful beyond just scratching the itch of making regulation better, um, it has a very real impact on how housing actually gets built, right? It costs more if you have to go to the ZBA and have a refusal set and talk to a million people at the BPDA all the time about how it's going to go. It costs more, it takes longer, it uses up public resources, and it means less housing gets built. So it's less efficient. It doesn't solve the housing crisis, and it just takes a lot of time for things which you all generally, I think, on the whole, agree is a good kind of thing for the city. And as a basic metric here, it takes a hundred days to go from zero to a hundred um permit-wise if you don't need relief, and that is quintupled if you're got to, if you got to get a variance. From here, I'm going to give it to Andrew.
I'll actually be presenting the case studies. Um, so we've we've prepared three case studies of real ADU projects that um had zoning violations that had to go before the ZBA to get approval. Um, these are of all three types, internal addition and detached. And I'm going to go through the violations pretty quickly because for some of these, they have a lot of violations, but this is just to get a sense of the type of violations that these projects would have if there was no zoning update done to allow them by right. So the first uh project we're looking at is an internal ADU. Um, this two-family home in Hyde Park converted an unused basement into an ADU. And you might be asking, wait, I thought that this was allowed by right. Well, the issue here is that Well, the issue here is that the homeowners needed to add a new exterior stair. And that meant that this kicked them out of that by right kind of ADU one point O allowance, this just addition of a little bit of more FAR. And so they had all of these zoning violations that they needed to have relieved. So the pre-existing home, not the ADU, had many different zoning violations. First, there was insufficient usable open space per dwelling unit. The front yard was, had an insufficient setback, as did the side yards. There was insufficient parking per dwelling unit, as well as an insufficient lot, additional lot area. And the existing home itself was excessive of FAR, even without thinking about the ADU. So these are all zoning violations that were triggered for the pre-existing home without you even having to think about the ADU. Now, thinking through some of the additional zoning violations that came into play with the proposed basement ADU, this proposed basement ADU sort of kicked up the unit allowance, the unit count. It turned a two-family into a three-family in a two F five thousand sub-district. And per the Hyde Park neighborhood code, there are no basement units that are allowed. And so this project was flagged for that as well. Now, taking a look at the type of zoning violations that an attached ADU might encounter, this is a case study of a single-family home in Dorchester that constructed a two-story addition to their existing home. And they used this extra living space in the addition partly to extend the living space of their existing unit, and then also to create a newer, smaller unit in the attached ADU. They also combined their property with the adjacent empty lot. It was the same owner who was doing this. So the pre-existing home had one pre-existing zoning violation. Its rear yard was insufficient. It was six to four feet, kind of varying. But then the zoning, in terms of the ADU, the parking violate, there was a parking location issue in terms of the parking was not allowed in the front yard, and they needed to ask for a zoning variance for this, as well as this ADU, again, bumped up from a one-family to a two-family in a one F five thousand sub-district. And now moving on to looking at a detached ADU. This ADU was actually built, you can see here, Google Maps view. This is a single-family home in West Roxbury that converted an existing carriage house to an ADU. As I said, the project was approved by the ZBA and constructed soon after. And again, this is an existing structure that was converted into a detached ADU. So the pre-existing zoning violations that the home or the lot had were insufficient usable open space. Its front yard was insufficient, as were its side yards. There was also insufficient parking per dwelling unit. I believe in West Roxbury, it's two parking space, two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. And there was an excessive floor area ratio when you think about just the existing unit, and then also that was bumped up further by the proposed detached ADU. The proposed detached ADU, just due to the location that it had on the lot, it's also a pre-existing structure, of course. It was, it did not conform to the rear yard, to the rear yard requirements in the zoning code. So as you're all quite aware, currently, Mattapan is the only neighborhood that has had its zoning right-sized to allow for all types of ADUs. And this new residential zoning, which was drafted through the recent Plan Mattapan process and approved by you all on the zoning commission in January of twenty twenty-four, delivers clearer land use regulations that more accurately reflect Mattapan's neighborhood character. And this new zoning accomplishes the following. It reduces non-conformity by at least half in the neighborhood, if not fully eliminating it for certain dimensional requirements. Secondly, it supports the existing character of the neighborhood via the allowance of more types of renovations to existing homes and the development of new contextual housing on vacant lots. And thirdly, it allows the by-right development of internal, attached, and detached ADUs. And in fact, on seventy-seven percent of residential lots now, they have the zoning envelope to allow for a detached studio-sized six hundred square foot ADU. And so this type of process that the planning and zoning team performed in Mattapan is sort of kind of guiding our way in terms of the citywide ADU zoning initiative. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Andrew to more in-depth talk about the zoning initiative itself and some of our key milestones.
Excellent, Brianna.
Adriana, thank you, Commissioner. So as Adriana stated, we will really be, in many ways, building off of the process started in Mattapan, looking at how the ADU program can be expanded citywide, and how the team has stated, we'll be really looking at, as part of this, how we can right-size residential zoning, both to make it easier for, you know, to make it match our existing building fabric, as well as make it easier for residential projects to kind of, you know, take the initiative to create ADUs as of right as well. Part of this, too, will be to create clearer standards of what can and cannot be built. And that's both through the public process as well as through the drafting of a new text amendment, and then ultimately allow ADUs to be built on most residential lots without special approval. Next slide, please. So I'll quickly take you through the process, the initial analysis process that we'll be using to get really towards, you know, finding the appropriate building envelope, both in terms of matching our existing build, building fabric, but also what we want to see as, you know, the appropriate envelope that would allow for ADUs to fit within that. So first, we'll really be looking at different lot patterns throughout the city, taking into consideration things like lot width, lot depth, lot area, as well as lot coverage of a building on the lot, getting a better sense of also where a lot of these non-conformities are coming from, especially when it comes to things like open space and yard space. And by looking at these things, we'll also begin by grouping these different metrics into various lot types or typologies that we can use to test various scenarios and building envelope restrictions. Next slide. Alongside this, we'll also be looking at the buildings on these types of lots and getting a better sense of the different building typologies throughout the city that I think we're all very aware of, but have various consequences when it comes to building footprint and building width and building size or roof type. So whether it's a row home or a triple-decker, we'll be looking at how much does the building cover on the lot? What are the typical yard dimensions associated with that building? And creating alongside those lot typologies different residential building typologies that are associated with them. Next slide. So ultimately, where this gets us is getting a better sense of, you know, existing patterns within the city, the relationship between different lot sizes and different building types, and also a baseline for looking at and testing different building envelopes, different regulations to ensure that they might better align with the existing building fabric. And ultimately, what are the building envelopes that we might want to use to allow for additional ADU development? So this process will really involve test fitting different scenarios, trying to determine where we, how we want to see ADUs fit, as well as the scenarios where we might not want to permit ADUs. So alongside this entire process as well, we'll be developing, as Adriana mentioned, an illustrated ADU guidebook. And the guidebook itself is really to help homeowners, as well as designers and contractors, how to understand the zoning that we're working through, as well as the building guidelines and overall code to help them develop ADUs on their lot. The goal here is to publish the guidebook itself in September. So this will really run in parallel to a lot of our analysis in terms of test fitting and looking at different lot-type scenarios that we might want to illustrate for the public. The book, it's, the guidebook itself will also include the new zoning regulations as well as an overview of some of the key building and fire code regulations that come into play as well. And we do want to make this really a public-facing document that's accessible, easy to read, and works in tandem with the zoning code as a tool to enable ADU development. So as the team stated, this will be a year-long process, which will involve both, you know, a ongoing and rigorous public engagement process as alongside and informing the drafting of a zoning text amendment. Right now, we're in this initial phase of really analysis, looking at building and lot types, which will then inform some of these draft zoning recommendations that we'll present and work with the public to gain feedback on in terms of what they want to see in terms of a building envelope. In terms of timeline itself, we're looking to release the draft zoning text amendment in early July, followed by a two-month public comment period. Throughout this process, we'll also be running virtual zoning office hours, as well as focus groups to review both the draft recommendations, the guidebook, and the text amendment itself. We anticipate delivering the final draft zoning text amendment in early October and bringing the text amendment to the BPDA board in December. As I stated, the goal here is to publish the ADU guidebook in late September to really come alongside the final draft of the zoning text amendment and really serve as like something that's accessible and a clear resource alongside what we understand as often a dense package of texts in terms of the zoning legal document. So we, you know, throughout this process, really look forward to, you know, right-sizing the building envelopes we see, as well as engaging with the public to see, really try and determine what that might be, as well as how we can best and most appropriately encourage and enable ADU development within that.
Great. And I know this is, as a commission that reviews, right, PDAs, the largest scale development in the city, that we're really sort of bringing you an initiative that reflects what the absolute smallest scale of sort of zoning and development in the city might look like. But because this will be a sort of major focus and ultimately a very significant text amendment that we will be hoping to advance to you, want to make sure that we're keeping you updated and involved in that process.
Kathleen, can I ask a quick question? Because certainly, you know, sometimes we deal with real minutia things like hours of operation and stuff. So this is, I think this is a lot, very interesting and very, I loved your presentation. I hope we can get a copy of it because it would be helpful to have. I just had two quick questions, you know, as this is evolving, how are you going to, are you going to require that the homeowner be the only occupant on site, or at least occupying on site if you go to two unit to threes? And then secondly, is this, is this text amendment going to be basically one text amendment that has a grid or a chart that by neighborhood, you're reflecting the context of the building envelope that Will described and others described, you're going to have to analyze? Because there'll be, I would assume, different elements of variability in the, in different parts of the city. So you keep the character of those neighborhoods in place. So just kind of those two points of how is homeownership going to continue or not factor into this? Because, you know, I could see that if you can get an ADU built, that's another occupiable unit. But maybe you want to keep that component, too.
So I'd say that right now, our plan is that for the first one, that it would require that there, essentially that it be an accessory unit. So there has to be a homeowner occupant on the parcel. It can be right accessory to a three-unit building. So it just one of those units needs to be the main unit that would be occupied by the homeowner on site, where it to be a small condo building, for example. I think on the latter, the question of what structure this is going to take is one where like, we don't have, we're going to let, see where the analysis starts to lead us. Because there are very, there are commonalities, and then particularly around both the sort of scale of lots, the orientation of lots. Sometimes even the triple-decker in Dorchester is different than the triple-decker in East Boston. And how we kind of make sure that we're kind of creating a pathway that really is reflective of existing building forms is like our sort of top priority and whatever sort of text amendment structure we think can get us there most effectively is what we're going to bring, try to bring before you.
But you don't think it'll be a by neighborhood, or it could be, it sounds like?
It could be, but it, you know, the neighborhood articles, I think, over time, right, they have many things that are shared in common. And then some of what, some of the challenge of that is actually then the things that aren't shared in common become their own sort of most important fifteen percent. Sometimes that was intentional, sometimes that developed over time as amendments were made in one article and not in another. So I think we are thinking very strategically about what are components of the code that really do need to stay in neighborhood article because they reflect something very specific about that location? And what are things such as components around, like, for example, the design of sort of parking screening and buffering that might be able to live in, say, a parking section of the code long-term and apply by district across the city?
Okay. Thank you. I just, I hope we don't have to do like twenty-five different. I just, I don't know what's easier for the execution and implementation. Of course, whatever is easier makes the most sense for it to be, you know, for it to work. Obviously, there's a common goal here, which is to create housing units, so, thank you.
Kathleen?
Yeah, please.
I applaud this effort. I think this is really great. It's really, really needed in the city. And, I mean, it's crazy that we have zoning that really puts everything out of compliance. And the amount of time for a small, whether it's a homeowner or a very small developer, the cost of going through that permitting process can be extraordinary. And it's already, it's going to be tough to do these as is because just the cost of construction for, for most of these folks is, is going to be shocking. And is there enough revenue coming out of that? But that's a decision that they're going to have to make. And I understand that there's going to be some other financial tools. But getting this so that we really have as a right that they have the ability to do this. At the same time, I say that there, you know, I do recognize that the adjoining properties may, the impact is, and what I'm watching this now is my son and his family in Charleston looking at a parcel next to them where they have bay windows facing it, and it's been open. And now somebody's proposing this ZBA issue to build there. And the height, one story, no problem. But with multiple stories, so you kind of need to think about those issues, too. At the same time, we've got to make it as a right, so. I applaud what you guys are doing. I think it's great.
Thanks, Joe.
Hey, James?
Yeah.
Hi. I, well, I also, I think like Joe complimented the presentation, great. It was wonderful, sort of gave a, you know, greater insight to it, certainly, of the three examples. But I think we all know, there's going to be many more examples that are going to be somewhat outside of, you know, that, those three areas that, you know, are going to have to be looked at and reviewed. And it's going to be a variety of conditions. But I do have two questions. First, my first question would be, well, similar to what Jill said, if the owner has to be on site somewhere, which seems a reasonable condition for my condition from my perspective. And you know, if so, is there going to be any income restrictions on, on any of these? These units or is it, or is that not part of the equation?
Great question. So we so, and one thing I will add on, so our, our plan is to bring this forward with an owner occupancy requirement. The state is considering a bill that would apply to all communities, but Boston. Right now, that if it were to advance, would preempt saying cities can and towns cannot have an owner occupancy requirement. And so we're the state to make a change to the regulatory framework. I think we would look to align ourselves with the state policy. And so I, you've got, while it is our plan to bring this forward with the owner occupancy requirement currently, we are also paying attention to state level legislation on this. And the second thing I would say on the income restrictions is that both in terms of current participants in the program and people who express interest in doing of it, this, many of it is based on folks looking to provide housing for their families and multi generational housing arrangements. And once you are participating in, you know, signing a housing agreement with the city, there are important fair housing protections that come along with that around both, you know, income and asset limitations and the advertising of those units, but sort of open and broadly. And so because this is an owner on site, we think it is a, and particularly the benefit it offers for multi generational housing, we think that that's a appropriate way to bring it forward without an income limitation.
Okay, I, and, and I understand that. And I, I certainly believe and concur initially, that's, you know, that, you know, this is being done for, you know, family and, you know, for, you know, family housing, meeting family housing needs. So I certainly understand that. But I think in reality is at some point in time, you know, you know, the property owner A is going to run out of family and he's, he or she has built this, this ADU and they're going to go to market. So and I understand that that's going to be a moving target. I just, I'm just merely, you know, bringing, bringing it up. My, my last, my second question and final question was, what is to prevent somebody from building one of these units that has a full kitchen, a full bath, a bed or two, but then has either some type of working office slash shop contained within it? It's really a commercial operation. I, I can see that. I don't know if others, you know, see that. I'm just, that's just my belief that, that some people are going to say, hey, why am I, you know, down the street spending $2,500 a month when I have, I can build this in my backyard pay myself $2,500?
So we, in the, the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, it is limited to a dwelling unit that would allow accessory home occupation like we do in, in any other dwelling unit of the city, whether that's someone sort of working on their computer from home, teaching piano lessons in their home. The determination ISD has to make is that it has, you know, no impacts that are different than were it just operating as a dwelling unit. And all of the requirements around both uses and licensing would still apply in zoning districts there.
I, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm going to go a little farther out of the branch in, in piano lessons or then piano lessons. I'm going to go out, somebody wants to make a, you know, a workshop, a wood workshop and, and is building cabinets in his or her living room, so called living room. I, I, again, it's, it's sort of a gray area in, in my opinion, and I see people that would do that to evade, you know, having to rent, you know, at least space outside. And, you know, that's really a commercial activity meant to circumvent what, what the goals of the ADUs are, in my belief. So thanks. You did a great job. Wonderful. Go Bruins. I'm with you there. But, you know, I, I, those are just some simple low hanging pieces of fruit that I see.
And exactly why we brought this to you guys is so that we could know what are things we need to make sure we build into the analysis. So appreciate that.
So Dave, thanks for your comments. And I thank you Kathleen and the BPDA team. And Will, I enjoyed your enthusiasm as a hot fired, hot blooded Latino. So I, um, Dave, your comments really kind of struck home for me because I know my parents got into some problems because they were, you know, Latino family trying to start a small business and they were doing it in Rosendale and blah, blah, blah. And it wasn't, Rosendale wasn't the diverse charming community it is today. This is in the seventies. And they got a lot of difficulties with the neighbors. Eventually they did move out and started their business and to make a plane and blah, 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 blah. But it is a gray area, I think. And I'm speaking as a Latino who is, you know, I'm going to put the race card on and say, you know, small business people have like, maybe there, maybe there's a use, maybe it's like you can be a seamstress or whatever. Or so I think that we need to have some kind of sensitivity for kind of entering populations as they try to get a piece of the American pie. And so the ADU piece, I think, is an interesting, you know, kind of notion. So I'm just talking about it from a very personal perspective. I think the other concerns about what happens to these properties when the homeowner dies and do they become two units and real estate? And that's fine. But I think the crisis, frankly, in terms of the challenges BPDA faces, I think the ADU thing is your, your, your easiest one to get through to the common, I think most people get it and most people will support it. So you don't have a red flag in terms of the, I think, what I hear on the street from the city of Boston on this issue. So congratulations and I'm fully supportive.
Thank you, Ricardo. Anything else?
Kathleen, one little question here that was brought to mind by David Ricardo's comments. So I'm a homeowner and built the ADU. I die or let's just say I sell the, the property. The next person is, it's a, it's a triple decker and they're running it out. They're not living there. Do they all of a sudden become they're, they're in violation of zoning?
Let's, let's even just imagine a situation where like you need to move for four years, right? And rented out. The, the unit would be in violation and would have to, if, you know, they went to go file at the Board of Appeal for a, a building permit, right, for some other project, they're repairing the stairs right on the front, would receive a citation for a violation and would have to go through the variance process to do something called, you know, confirm occupancy, reflecting that use. I think, you know, we're, we're watching the state legislation, right, the, the process of violation and enforcement does sort of require a, something that will generate a zoning violation so that that filing of building permit to happen. And it, it does become complex, right, for a homeowner over the course of their housing tenure to sort of ensure that they remain in compliance. But on, on the flip side, I think we also hear very strongly from many, right, homeowners and community members that they feel comfortable with this when it's limited to homeowners and, and feel more nervous about this open across the city. And so I think that's, that's something that we kind of continue to sort of juggle and surface in terms of both where is state regulation going to be and, and also where is, you know, neighborhood and community sentiment and, and comfort with this.
So Kathleen, can you just?
Just have to see.
Can I just, so can you just say again, what, what is the state considering? Maybe I misunderstood you the first time. The state is considering that there not be a homeownership requirement?
Yes, the state is considering a bill that would preempt zoning in, you know, all communities that are in chapter 40 communities, so not us in Boston, that would say that jurisdictions would not be allowed. They, amongst other sort of set of four, essentially qualities of preemption, one of them would be that communities would not be able to limit them to only homeowner occupants.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, Drew. I just, I, I thought that that's what I heard. Okay.
I just had one other. In terms of selling the building and everything, we can't control everything. And we'll just have to see if that becomes a problem. I don't, I'm not sure it will be such, because to build a single ADU unit for, for developers to go around saying, oh, I'm gonna, somebody's going to build this now as a homeowner and I have a deal with them. I'm going to buy it. The economics of this are not so great. I mean, if you're, if you're taking, you're building this out and let's say it costs you 400 bucks a square foot to, to build it and the size of the unit, the rent that you can get for it, I'm not sure this is for most people, this is really going to pencil out. One thing I think we don't want to do is restricted to just affordable because then nobody will build anything because, because the numbers aren't going to work. The CDCs and others know how to make a 30 unit building work and where to get the, the financing for a single unit. It just isn't going to work. So I would really encourage us not to do. It's, it's gonna, just whatever the market will bear on this.
But and more supply, more supply will create an ability for rents to not be so significantly high. A thesis should be that. And, and I think that that's, you can't, you can't control everything by putting affordability restrictions. If you increase supply, that will help. It absolutely, as does student housing construction and all these other, but, but to that, to that, to that point of life happens to people. And so like my daughter has a house in South Boston, but they had to move for work. And, and even in today's work from home, sometimes you have to move for work. And they're renting out their house now. Now they may come back. I, I think that, as you said, Kathleen, you would need to pull a permit to trigger a violation enforcement. But is that really the intended outcome either? Is it a bad thing for the city to have these ADU and the homeowner who's maybe out of town because they had to move for work for a period of time? Why is that bad for the city that the homeowner is not there? I, it, it, I think that you could look at it from another lens and, and say, it's still good to have that ADU there. So.
Appreciate that. And I, I will say, Dave, one thing I also wanted to highlight is that the Article 79 inclusionary zoning that you all passed last year will apply to any project with, you know, seven or more housing units. And I, I think, right, we, we envision the ADUs really falling in the space below, right, that it's a scale that's smaller than that. But the, you know, as you all heard, we've, that inclusionary zoning was really stretching to the limits of feasibility of what we think is possible at that scale.
Anything else?
Excel, I, I know this, it's a commitment of more time, but we are going to try when we have a shorter agenda opportunity to take that time to bring you updates on ongoing sort of zoning efforts and be able to get your, your feedback. Because it's really invaluable as the folks who spend the most time with the zoning.
And can you send us the presentation? I, I would like to look through it a little bit more in depth.
Yes. Yeah. And we can also send you to the page for the initiative overall, which is where we'll also recordings of the public meetings, like where we'll be posting future public comment, et cetera.
Great. Awesome.
I just thought of one more question and I'm sorry to throw it at you. But assuming there is space is, and maybe you said this and I didn't hear it, was, is, is there a possibility of more than one ADU being on, on a property?
So how we handled this in Matapan, and I, I'm not sure this will be possible in every area, is that in, in Matapan, you could have up to two ADUs on a property, but there also was an overall dwelling unit account, like restriction in the district. So if you were a existing one family youth in a, in a two family district, you could build both a attached and a detached ADU. Because the ADU essentially let you go, you could go up to three units total with an ADU in that two family district. So you can't go, you can't be a two family and it, in, in, again, in the Matapan example, you can't be a two fam, existing two family in, you know, what was essentially, what we designated a two family district plus an ADU and then build two ADUs. You would have to be a a one family youth and then build two ADUs.
So you could be a three, in a three family district, you could, you could add a, a fourth unit?
Yes.
It'd end up to make it up to.
That is what the, yeah. And then again, in the Matapan example, if you were a two family youth in the three family district, you could add two ADUs. If you were a three family youth in a three family district, you can add one ADU. And again, welcome, like part of the work of spending the time to really dig through this over the course of the next year is to really think about how that actually maps on to different types of lots and different types of building structures in the city and think really seriously about both what is possible and what is desirable.
Thank you very much, Kathleen.
I know.
Do you have the next meeting by chance?
I do. And we are, and I know Jeff has been in contact with you all. And we are going to hold the next meeting on April 17th. As, and then another meeting the following week on April 24th. We're doing that because we are going to be bringing before we're you two sort of very significant zoning amendments, one, the Squirtz and Streets text amendment, which we are planning to bring on April 17th. And then rewrite of Article 53, which addresses East Boston, which we are planning to bring on April 24th. We've, we're advertising both of those agendas this week. That's in order to try and help balance out the length of the meeting with public testimony. We're going to split those to the two different meetings rather than put all the zoning amendments at one meeting out of hopefully respect for your schedules. And then there will be a, a number of PDAs and IMPs as well.
Were they, some of what was in the?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Kathleen, during these kinds of sessions, it's really helpful. So instead of us having to just say both yes or no, we have a chance to ask questions, raise some issues and things like that. I think it's really, I think this is really important. It's great. And, and I'm glad you found a way to do this that complies with the open meeting law.
Yeah, we, the, a lot of conversation with our excellent legal advice at the here at the BPDA to make sure we could, could do that.
It's great.
And it's good. This is on the public record so that people can start to be educated and learn about it with us. I think it's great. I hope people learn to, I mean, people are welcome to stay on. So good for.
Yeah, I think that.
We can go to public meetings as well, right?
Um, if you all attend, you are welcome to attend public meetings. You need to disclose that you are there. And part of you disclosing that you are there is that making sure that no more than three of you are there at any time. And then one of the challenges that is that you can't, we have to avoid any deliberation. You know, on an item, particularly as public meetings may get to the end. Now, saying that, we as staff would welcome, right? Like if, if you want to come to a public meeting, let us know. And we would love to like, be like, we have a member of the zoning commission here to like, listen and hear your perspectives if that's a thing that you want to do. But, but based on their legal advice, they, they were like, we would really need to, like, it needs to be made clear and we need to then keep track of how many commissioners are there.
Kathleen, what, what category of meetings is that? Is that every BPDA meeting?
There's, there's, I, I will, I'll go ahead and get a clarification on that. I, I believe it's like, right, if, if a BPDA board meeting, right, is being convened as its own public hearing and they're the deliberating body. I believe they're primarily. I believe they're primarily concerned with public, public meetings that we're hosting as an advertised meeting for the public on an item where it could create an opportunity for you to deliberate a proposal before it is put forward before you.
I thought it was the business of the, of the, of the, of our commission, which is zoning. So I, I would think, Michael, if it was a zoning related public meeting, that it would potentially fall into that category because I'm on another group that is subject to that. And, and we are very careful about making sure not more than three of us are in a room hearing a topic that has to do with our commission or committee's work. So, but I think we are entitled as citizens to, to, so even if, if there were, you would just have to disclose it and everyone would, you know, would just, we're being open about it, but we certainly shouldn't not be able to go.
Correct. Correct.
Case in point, I'm in Rosendale. Squares and Streets is being enrolled in Rosendale. I've been to, I think, maybe, I've disclosed that I'm on the zoning commission and then I become a target and people start attacking me. So I just want to say that. So I want to tell you, it's just so I have all these questions because it's like, guys, I am fully supportive, but the natives are getting restless. And so, you know, we want, we want this to be a win and to get this done. But, you know, we also need to sort of hear people. So that's just, I'm just putting it out there. That's all.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll try and I'll check in around that issue particularly like things that are in a, a more nebulous space of like planning conversations and engagement and meetings and, and work to come back to you with some additional sort of feedback from the legal team.
Great. Please.
Great. Thank you.
Great. All right.
Thank you very much. Yes, I will adjourn on that point.
Great.
Thank you.
In next month.
Next time, everybody.
Thank you.